A pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. This is the Mahoney County Commissioners' Hearing Room, regular meeting number 39, Thursday, September 29, 2022, slightly after 10:00. Right now, we are going to have a presentation from Attorney DeGenova with the Prosecutor's Office, and she will give you some updates on what they're doing and a presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners, Audrey, Nancy. Thank you for having me here today. I wanted to come and talk about October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in honor and recognition of that month, last year, what we did through the Mahoney County Prosecutor's Office was we supported a donation drive, a community-wide donation drive, where we accepted donations throughout the month of October. We had a drop-off spot here in the Administration Building, and then we donated all of the items collected to Sojourner House, which is our local domestic violence shelter. Well, we were so fortunate to come into contact with a South Range student, and she's here and is also going to speak with you today. Her name is Mackenzie Gall, and she happened to see our brochure that we had up at the Canfield Fair last year and took the initiative to contact us and said, hey, I want to help out. She was also a member of Key Club and was a junior at the time. So through Mackenzie's efforts, our donation drive was an immense success. She helped collect over 3,000 items, in addition to over $1,000 in gift cards and monetary donations, all of which were donated directly to Sojourner House to help victims of domestic violence right here. And it is a very cause that, it's a cause that's very near and dear to Art Hart and the Prosecutor's Office. We have a Violence Against Women Division, and we work tirelessly to protect the rights of domestic violence victims every day. And so when this opportunity came up for us to recognize those victims and help give back to the community, we were very excited to do it. Well, this year, I'm happy to announce that with the assistance of Mackenzie Gall, who has now made this cause her senior project, has increased the reach of this project, and we are now going regionally. She has, and she's going to talk a little bit about it, but she has made contact with leadership teams in Key Clubs, not only in South Range, but in Poland, Canfield, and Salem. And so with her assistance, we are able now to not only help victims of domestic violence here in Mahoney County, but we're able to take it regionally, and we're going into Columbiana County. And so whatever collections are made by Poland in Columbiana, I'm sorry, by Salem in Columbiana, we will then be donating to Christina House, which is their domestic violence shelter. We've also added Beatitude House as well, and they also help women in need who are homeless for many reasons, including because they are victims of domestic violence. So with that, I would like to invite Mackenzie Gall up to explain the nature of her project and why this is a very important cause to her.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. So like Gina said, last year, we were able to collect over 3,000 items from South Range alone, which was a huge amount, more than we ever expected to collect from such a small project. With this year coming around, I really wanted to collect as many as possible and make this project as big as I possibly could, which is why I reached out to multiple other schools in the area, like Gina mentioned, including Poland, Canfield, and Salem. In addition to these schools, we also have reached out to multiple other businesses in the area, like North Lima Nutrition, Columbiana Nutrition, multiple Starbucks locations, and Giant Eagle locations, as well as multiple other businesses that have said that they're willing to both sponsor as well as put boxes in their businesses and advertise for this, which is a huge accomplishment. I'm really excited. I do have a goal for this year. We're hoping to raise 10,000 items this year. But with the reach that this is achieving, I think it's a very feasible goal for us. I'm really excited to see where this will take us this year because of the success that we saw last year alone and all the support that I've been given from our returning sponsor, Buckeye Hospice, as well as multiple other sponsors that have come under and said that they are more than willing to help us out here. So I'm really excited to see what this month will bring and the success we'll see. Thank you. I brought my mom with me today. Good morning, everybody. She works at Buckeye Hospice, so.
You're such a young woman to take the interest in trying to help other women and men from domestic violence. It's silent, but it's out there, and it's in so many different areas that we don't even know about. And thank you for doing that. That is just, I'm really amazed, and I'm proud of you.
She's an impressive young lady.
You should be very proud of her for that. That is something.
Very articulate, very passionate. And, you know, you could see the glow on your mom's face radiating, you know, because, and we had the privilege of sitting with your mom and dad and meeting them at the Farm Bureau Dinner, as we were discussing before the meeting. And we didn't know all this at the time, but obviously you can tell you had a great family and great parents, so.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
You need people like you.
And where do you go to school?
South Range.
And you're a senior this year.
It's a great school system.
Good deal.
Very busy young lady.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you, Gina. We appreciate it.
No problem. And just to let everyone know, we will be putting all the information on drop-off locations and on our social media sites, our website, and we will also be handing out flyers, and we will be collecting donations throughout the month of October. So we're very excited.
What kind of items are you looking for?
So there's wish list items, so what we did was we went directly to the source of the agency. So it could go anywhere from personal hygiene items to bedding to cleaning supplies. I know Beatitude House, most of their wish list items focus on cleaning supplies, laundry detergent, bleach, pull-ups, diapers, formula, anything with, you know, anything to help out young children, babies, toddlers. And honestly, those are preferred, but we will take anything anyone has to give because, you know, as Mackenzie said and as Commissioner Rigetti noted, you know, these are people who leave their home, a very violent and volatile home, at a moment's notice, and they have nothing but sometimes the shirts on their back. So they are appreciative, and we are appreciative of anything that we could gather and provide throughout this project.
So would you take monetary?
Absolutely. Monetary donations, gift cards, particularly to help food stores, grocery stores would be great, anything that anyone wants to donate. And again, those go directly to the providers of those services.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Before we begin, we would like Diane Frye, who is our dog warden, to come up and say a few words and kind of give us an update on what's actually going on right now with the dogs and in our county and what I'm seeing on TV. Everybody's packed up.
Yeah, we are. We're, we are going through a particularly difficult time right now. And actually, for the first time since I've been appointed, we had a Summit County reached out to us to see if we had any cage space to take some dogs. I mean, this is something that the state is seeing. And, you know, even if you look on Facebook posts, you'll see that the whole country is seeing just a rise in population in their county pounds, their shelters. The, all the rescues that we normally go to, they're able to take maybe one or two dogs where they would take four or five. But so it's just, it's across the board. Everybody is really full. And we're seeing a lot more violent cases, and we can't turn them over to animal charity, the Humane Society, right now because we don't know who the perpetrators are, so there's nothing to investigate. We're just finding these dogs or we're catching these dogs. We just had a dog that was found in a shed with a gunshot wound from the head and out the back of the neck, and this dog was emaciated. It's very young, really quite sad. And Megan, who does a phenomenal job with our posts, this, the story was actually picked up by Newsweek and People, and we actually found it on a German website and a Spanish website, so this has gone national. We are receiving donations from San Diego, California, Canada. I mean, it's really amazing how this story has gotten out through her efforts of putting all of the stories of the dogs coming in. So it's not just people. We're seeing it, we're seeing it across the board. It's really quite sad.
You wonder what is driving people.
You know what? I don't know. We've never seen anything like this, where we're so full.
How many dogs are at the pound right now?
Right now, it's over 80. We're approaching 90. We're getting close to maximum capacity. And we're statutorily obligated to make sure that we have open runs for strays for these situations, so it's really, it's really difficult right now. So that's, and that's an added burden on the staff when you're taking care of so many dogs, especially when they're not in good shape, so.
And the norm, you know, when I'd go there, you know, a year ago and walk around and give bones to the dogs, there'd be like 40, 45 dogs.
Right. Between the two kennels, prior to the pandemic, we would have like in the 60s, between the 50s and the 60s, which, you know, between the intake kennel and the adoption kennel, and that was very doable, and we had a good rhythm going with adoptions. Oh, we've seen our return to owners actually come up high, which is always good, so that means we're doing our job. We're getting the dogs back to their owners, but we've never seen anything like this.
How many people are, work for the dog pound in your staff?
11 right now. Yeah, and that's, and we're 24/7, so that includes me. So it gets difficult to take care of those dogs.
Are you still getting help from some of your partners, the rescue, the dog?
You know what? They're doing what they can. We have volunteers that come in and help walk the dogs, but, you know, again, it's just, you know, it's a lot. Megan put out a request for dog food. We were low on dog food, and it was absolutely overwhelming, the response from the community. It was amazing. We got 340-some boxes of bags of dog food, so we are set for the year. So that's, you know, we get toys, we get enrichment items. The community, we have a great community that supports us a lot, but we just need to find out what the key is to these dogs ending up this way and try to mitigate some of that.
And people can just like go on Chewy and order something and put the delivery down, you know, as the dog.
And we do the same thing, right? We do the same thing. We ask for pumpkin, pull-up, you know, just different things so we can give the dogs different enrichments, you know, because their day, you know, it's a long day in a kennel, we do what we can.
In a cage 24/7.
And it's hard to adopt those dogs out.
When you have downed dogs and only, you know, three or four people show up to walk.
Right. And it's hard to get those, you know, to get those dogs to decompress and settle in so they show their best side, and we get to know them when adopters come in, so.
I loved it when you and the staff took frisbees and painted the inside of the frisbee with peanut butter, and they would hang them on the cage, and the dog would lick the peanut butter off the frisbee through the cage. And, you know, and when I first saw them doing that, I thought, wow, that's pretty cruel, throw it in there, but it consumes its time, and it, you know, it lets them focus and calm down and gives them a treat.
And it's hysterical to watch those frisbees, you know, going.
Yeah, bouncing, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it's really, and the dogs love it, so.
And that's good.
I tell you, God bless everybody, because, you know, I mean, I have been there many, many times, and the people on the road, you know, they get a call where, you know, they've got a dog running loose, and they don't, you don't know if it's a neighbor's dog or a stray or somebody that's vicious dog or whatever. And, you know, people just like you, me, and Diane, we have women on the staff, we have men on the staff, they drive out in the van and try to catch a dog, you know, and that's our, our responsibility, you know, is to pick up strays off the road.
Right.
You know, that's the dog warden's main function and main responsibility. And, believe me, you've ever tried to catch your own dog sometimes, you know, I mean, how difficult it is. And you go out there, and you don't know if a dog's vicious or it isn't, and you've got people, you know, that work for the pound, you know, I mean, I don't know if I would go out and try to catch a pit bull running loose, you know, for 15 bucks an hour. No, I don't know. At 12:00 midnight, you know, you know, in a neighborhood that you're walking around the dark trying to catch a, you know, loose animal, or on 680 running, you know, on the freeway that someone's dumped a dog. And, you know, it's, it's not an easy job, it's not an easy position, and, you know, and we, we are not a no-kill shelter, but we are almost. You know, we only put down dogs that can't be adopted that are too vicious.
And we try to be responsible about the dogs we put back into the community, you know, for the community's sake, for our sake, for everybody's sake, because that's, you know, but we, our numbers, considering we are a county facility, are extremely low. So we do, we do the best we can with that.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
I appreciate the update. Do we have anybody else that may have a public comment? Three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll go forward. Approval of the previous minutes of Board Meeting Number 38, Thursday, September 22, 2022, and approval of bills for payment. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Journal entry is number one. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, journal entries. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number two, Travels, A, Prosecutors?
Yes. Good morning again, Commissioners. This is to attend, one of our prosecutors, to attend a National District Attorneys Association presentation on digital evidence in Orlando, Florida. It's non-general fund with an estimated cost of approximately $2,000.
All right, thank you. Number two, Travels, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Travels. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number three, Agreements, A, Convention of Visitors Bureau, Tara?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an agreement for program ads throughout the season for the Yuckstown Symphony Orchestra, the Yuckstown Playhouse Opera Western Reserve and Standbauer Auditorium. It is non-general fund.
Okay, thank you. B, Facilities, Alan?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is an agreement with Steel Valley Contractors LLC for demolition of back section of maintenance garage at the Oak Hill Facility in the amount of $49,700 of the general.
Okay, thank you. And C, Jobs and Family Services, and D, Audrey?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Nancy. Good morning, Audrey and Jim. Letter C, Job and Family Service Amendment Number One with Compass Family and Community Service to Extend Guardianship and Adult Protective Services until June 20, 2023 in the amount of $100,000 general. Letter D, Job and Family Service Amendment Number One with Protect and Shred Incorporated to Extend On-Site Shredding Services until December 31, 2022 at no change in the amount of $3,000 non-general.
Thank you. E and F, Phil?
Commissioner, E is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for chip home repair work at 479 Sanderson, the amount of $15,000 non-general. And F is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead house control work, 183 Maywood, the amount of $43,000. That's non-general fund and also conjunction with the City of Youngstown's CBG program.
And you know what? Why don't you, before you sit, why don't you tell them about the grant you just received?
Sighting news for us, the largest grant that we've ever received from HUD. I haven't actually heard from HUD themselves yet. They may have the checkbook, but I've heard from some powers that be, Tim Ryan and Sherri Brown have both put out announcements. We haven't put anything out, because I haven't heard from them as yet, but 5.7 million from HUD, that'd be $5 million for lead house control, $700,000 for healthy homes and home safety issues. In addition to that, 551,000 of local match funds from the Commissioners themselves, City of Youngstown. We had a lot of working partners. This program's been around a long time. You know, we've tested, by my estimation, as I was thinking about it, in 27 years of, or 25 years of our existence, more than 50,000 kids, 2,000 homes have been remediated of lead, and myriad beyond that with the chip grant, things like that. So we're excited. It'll put us another four years in the works, and it's going to create some jobs with some other things that are coming down the pike, create some jobs in the community while I'm recruiting contractors, homeowners, and things like that, landlords to participate in the program. So it's a big, it's a big ticket, so I appreciate your support.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Very happy to see that. Gee, sanitary, Tara?
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with Valley Industrial Trucks for inspections, parts, repairs of tow motors on an as-needed basis at various locations in the estimated amount of $5,000 and it's non-general.
Thank you. Number three, Agreements, A through G, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Agreements. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number four, Change Orders, Lead, A and B.
A is a change order with W&amp;W Construction for additional lead house control work at 2615 Taff, the amount of $1,000 non-general. And B is a change order with Gary Krim, Inc., for additional chip home repair work at 221 Elm Street, the amount of $1,220 non-general.
Thank you. And C, sanitary, Tara?
This is change order number one with Alcon Mechanical, Inc., for additional repairs to the boiler number one at the Camel Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $3,778 non-general funds.
Thank you. Number four, Change Orders, A through C, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Change Orders, A through C. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number one, Resolutions, Additions, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Resolutions. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number two, Record of Bids, A, sanitary, Tara?
This is the Camel Wastewater Treatment Plant grit removal system for improvement number 522 as a rebid.
Okay, thank you. Number two, Record of Bids, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Record of Bids. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number three, Resolution of Awards, A, B, and C, Lead?
Your awards for the chip rehab program, A is at 216 Elm Street, Struthers, to American Pinnacle Construction for $61,100 non-general, and it was bid out formally. B is an award for chip rehab and lead house control work at 122 Creed and Struthers to American Pinnacle for $57,600 non-general. And C is chip rehab at 133 West Wood Street in Lowellville to W&amp;W Construction, the amount of $67,670 non-general as well.
Okay, thank you. And D, sanitary, Tara?
This is to award the Old Winter Trail Pump Station Replacement Project, number 521, to Utility Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $531,955 non-general and low bid.
Okay, thank you. Number three, Resolution of Awards, A through D, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Resolution of Awards. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedyogugeti?
Yes. Number four, Resolutions, Commissioners, O and B, Audrey?
Commissioners?
And A and B, and C.
Commissioners, item A is a resolution to approve amendment and expenditure with the volunteer system COVID-19 public health and funded by ARPA in the amount of $19,950, and this is for the domestic courts project. Item B is a resolution to transfer funds from the American Rescue Plan Standard Allowance Revenue Replacement Fund to the Data Processing Fund in support of the Maioris Project in the amount of $2,100.
Two million.
Two million. Thank you, Dave. Two million. I wish it was 2,000. That'd be better, yeah. $2,140,000, and I'll get to Jake in a minute. Item C is a resolution to transfer funds from the American Rescue Plan Standard Allowance Revenue Replacement Funds to the Commissioners' Capital Project Fund in support of the Emergency Management Agency siren repair project in the amount of $130,000, and that will repair 10 sirens that need to have things repaired. And I'll ask Jake to speak on item B.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't know it was a speaking part. Go ahead. All right. I just think this is a great project, so I'm very excited about it. You know, the, I think whenever you invest in infrastructure, which is what we're doing, and this is a 30-year asset, that's going to change the way Mahoney County government and the entities in Mahoney County do IT. So it's very exciting. We know the economics are great on this. I mean, I think we're a 10-year span, we're looking at over $3 million savings, but the soft benefits, the services, we're going to be able to connect all of our locations, 70 different locations in Mahoney County with gigabit or better speeds is really going to allow for all these new applications that we're bringing on with video and all the court systems, justice systems, which have tax systems and payroll systems, allow all of our entities connect in addition to the regionalization aspect as we connect all of the municipalities. So I'm super excited about this. I know it's going to take about a year, 16 months to get done, but we're just scratching the services that are going to be accomplished with this, and I commend the Commissioners on stepping forward. Of course, the Prosecutors play a role in this with getting this contract done, the data board, which is headed by the auditor, was involved with this as well. So it's really been a collaborative team effort on this, so I appreciate everyone's inputs and just work and effort to get this accomplished, because this is a great thing for Mahoney County.
Jake, it's a closed system, too.
Just to add, it's the fiber optics. We're renting so many strands of fiber optic, and that's going to connect all the loops. So we will, the savings comes from funds we won't be paying to AT&amp;T and other providers of that kind of service now. So it is physically a fiber optic loop that will link it in.
So then you'll be able to connect in once they do the Lake de River, the dead zones, you know, where you could put the fiber optics on the buildings like you guys had discussed a while back by having part of this system.
Yeah, so this is going to connect, you know, right now the county has about 24 buildings that we as a county operate and connect, but this is going to go beyond that, connect the nine dispatch centers, and then an additional 40 or so police fire government buildings throughout Mahoney County with private fiber, Ralph noted. And so we'll have cost savings because our ongoing operational costs are going to be greatly reduced because we're not going to be paying for lease lines, because these, this is an IRU contract, which essentially is ownership of 12 strands of fiber, which out of the gate, we're only going to use six. We have six more to expand and grow with. So it's, it provides Mahoney County, not just today, but we all know how technology is. It's going to be different three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, but it's a known thing, the fiber optics, they've been around since the early 70s, and there's important now and as good now as it was then. So 50 years from now, I still feel this is going to be a viable asset for Mahoney County. So the fact that we own it and we control the electronics on it allows us to really dictate how we're going to use this network going forward without having third parties tell us how we're going to do things, which is typically the way IT departments work.
And you know what? That's, no, that's good.
Like Courtview.
That's been going, that's been going on with the fiber optics for years in Mahoney County, always. You guys have always worked on trying to bring something to the table with the fiber to connect in all other areas that are in dead zones.
Right.
So it's starting to move.
Yes.
I was at that meeting yesterday with.
I think if you talk to anybody, even as a home user, bandwidth really and speed to your network is.
Going to be better.
Thing when you're looking at performance of your computer, and bandwidth is expensive. We pay a lot of money, and we're rate limited on what we can do. We kind of find, try to find that sweet spot in the network where we want to be for cost and value, and this kind of removes a lot of those analytics. We just can crank it up as high as we want, and there's no charge to do it at, you know, 10 as opposed to 1,000. So the fact that we control that and it's great that we're working with a vendor, local So the fact that we control that and it's great that we're working with a vendor, local roots here in Volta, that kind of understands the way we work, so I think that's another asset of what we're doing here.
And all of that you could do for $2,140.
Yeah, there's more, but I haven't told her about that.
No, don't go. I wanted to say too, to the commissioners too, because they have the $10 million in revenue replacement dollars, and these projects are projects that allow them to do something that's going to benefit the county for years to come. And that's what they're doing with those dollars, is things that are going to be a benefit. They put like 1.5 million for the bridges. You know, those types of things are things that will benefit this county for a long period of time. So with those revenue replacement dollars, which they have a little bit more flexibility with, they can do projects like this.
50 years, that's a lot of years.
Yep.
I won't be here. But thank you for that.
She'll be here.
She'll be here.
I don't know if any of the rest of us.
Well, I shouldn't say that. You never know.
Jimmy will be here.
From all that running. All right, we will go on. Continuum of Care, Colleen?
Good morning, commissioners, Nancy and Audrey. This resolution is to support the applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the FY 2022 planning grant in the amount of $113,170, with a 25% local match. FY 2022 HMAs expansion grant in the amount of $75,000, with a local 25% in-kind match. And the CUC consolidated application in the amount of $2,368,247, with no match required.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, Colleen. How's everything else going with the continuum?
Good. Good. We are exploring some new projects that I'm excited about in the next couple of months. So hopefully we'll have some word on that. And this application is due to hunt in the next couple of days, so we'll find out results from that about six months, which also has some new applications in there to expand our services and just make sure the people in our community are getting the best housing services that they can.
Right, are we, are we getting enough of the housing that we need for the veterans and for the homeless? I mean, how is that progressing?
So in terms of the veterans population, we are looking at developing a property with family and community services. That's a little bit far out. It's going to be a new structure that's going to be built, and they are working with an architect, a family and community services is working with an architect to get the plans for that structure finalized. They're going to be using shipping containers.
Okay.
So, and after that project's done, we're kind of reassessed to see where we're at in terms of the people that are presenting and identifying as veterans, and then how that unit is going to fit into that. So we're going to reassess as we, as we kind of go along.
So Matt's working with you on that one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask to care? Go ahead. So that everyone knows, for the larger grant, what agencies does that support?
So it goes to all local nonprofits, so the Viatitude House, YWCA, Mahoning Valley, Mahoning County Mental Health Recovery Board, Health Network of Northeast Ohio, Meridian Healthcare, and the Ursuline Center. So those are all of our renewal projects. And then the two projects that are new, that put in, requested for funding, was Catholic Charities Regional Agency, and that is to help larger families in our community, people that are presenting with a single head of household with multiple children. And Compass Family Community Services put in an application for helping survivors of domestic violence and expanding those services through their organization.
Thank you. That is great to hear, that we're partnerships with all of those. Audrey worked a long time. Thank you, Colleen. Keep us posted. E, Convention of Visitors Bureau, Tara?
This is a $500 room sponsorship grant for the Memories of Christmas Past exhibit at the Arps Family Museum. Each year, this exhibit brings thousands of visitors.
Thank you. And F, EMA, O and B Grants. Anna? Anna, are you there?
Yes, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good. How about you?
Good, thanks. This resolution is to amend the original subscription agreement with the higher Department of Administrative Services, Mark's Radio Services. EMA will have a total of 10 radios now on the Mark system.
Okay, thank you. G, Jobs and Family Services, Audrey?
Good morning again, everyone. Letter G, Job and Family Service Resolution approving the paid administrative leave for one employee of the department.
Okay, thank you. H and I, Lead Base?
H is a moral obligation payment. This was a sendback for a punch list that was related with our chip review or audit of our 2018 grant, so it was well past the facts, so it came in as a moral obligation. And I is a change order that was in excess of 10% of the original bid, $2,000 for Allen Company and $2,550 Red Gate for a chip home repair.
Okay, thank you. And J, Purchase, Jimmy?
Good morning, everyone. This is a recommendation to rescind and replace existing resolutions that have limited us to obtaining quotations for goods and services at $1,000. We're moving that as a recommendation to $2,500. This is where the state is with their procedure. With effects of inflation, supply shortages, labor issues, time involved to try to get a quote at $1,000 isn't feasible anymore, especially a contract. It's hard even to get anyone to come out. This will save a lot of internal time in processing. It won't have to go through so many steps, and we'll expedite it. I want to thank Audrey, Stacy from Auditors, our prosecutor's office, especially Mark, and I can't forget Megan. We have to do some software updates now, so we don't know the pull and trigger dates, so to speak, to get this going, but we'll keep you informed through an email. So it's a great thing to save a lot of time and be with the times that are realistic. So thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, always. Number four, Resolutions A through J, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, Resolutions. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Gannon?
Yes, and that concludes our business portion of the meeting. Ralph, you have anything? Any of our elected officials?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. Anthony, Dave?
Well, good.
I want to congratulate Carol. She did a great job yesterday at Eastgate. Good meeting about expanding broadband, very important for our community, reaching out. Carol gave a great presentation of how that's going to affect certain families and young kids that did not have access to broadband during the pandemic, and how important it was to actually be able to have that during a time that we faced at that. So I want to congratulate Carol. Did a great job there. Gina, thank you. Wonderful presentation. We appreciate it. You're a dynamic young lady. Look forward to many greater things from you and your mom being there next to you. Thank you for coming. And Jake, Mr. Meacham, this connectivity within the county and expanding and renting the fiber, took me a while to finally understand it, and we're glad to see that it's getting off.
Wait, do you?
Well, a little bit of it, but Jake knows what he's doing, and we get it. So we look forward to working with you. And I'm also glad that we're in the process of getting our sirens fixed. I know I had a lot of phone calls during the tornado and those storms that people could not hear, because some of the sirens were not working. So the commissioners took swift action to get these things up and running and continued to monitor them. There was a glitch. Our EMA director, Mr. Frost, was here to explain actually what happened. Those sirens were tested a few days before, and they all worked. Comes a storm, and I think only five were functional. So I'm glad to see that we're on board getting that done. And my good friend Reverend Ellis Charles, good to see you. Mr. Tarpley, thank you for being here today with us. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, geez, oh man. You know, a lot of good things happening. Gina, thank you so much. And Mackenzie and Jennifer, it says Jennifer Wright, thank you so much for your work. You know, it just, it just shows that, you know, everybody, you know, getting together, and it just takes one person to get, to get a, you know, a burr under their saddle and get the initiative, you know? And, you know, thank God we have young people like yourselves, because too often, too many things fall by the wayside, and, you know, it's when, when you, when it's out of sight, out of mind, you know? And, and there's not enough focus being brought to people that have abusive situations, whether it be wives, husbands, children, elderly, or dogs. You know, and, you know, it seems that today, you know, we, we have extremes everywhere, in every walk, you know? 10% left or right that are extremists, whether they abuse dogs or they hoard dogs. You know, I mean, there's the rest, the 80% of us fall in the middle, and it seems like, you know, trying to take care of, you know, they focus on the bad, you know? And so, thank God we have good people that are doing right things. So thank you so much. Jake, love the opportunity to tie that all together. You know, we talked about it for a long time, and, you know, it's a, it's a great step, and I'm glad to see we have the funds to push it forward. The HUD funds, you know, 5 million there, and Colleen with 2.4 million, you know, the ARPA funds, 40 million to the county. It's nice to see the federal government, you know, bringing monies in for projects that are, that are so over, long past due and need from, from that standpoint, and being able to assist it. You know, the state budget gets cut and cut and cut daily for, for local governments, and we too often have to try to pick up the pieces ourselves. Too many levies on the ballot to handle things, too many sales tax on the ballot to handle things. You know, Mahoning County, like was said, like Gina said, has a lot of great people in there, Diane, that do good things. But you know what? We're always trying to help ourselves when we pay a lot in taxes every year to the state and to the federal government. We need some of that money returned. Thank God we're getting a lot of it returned from federal government. The state needs to keep, give, or to quit cutting the money that comes back for CDBGs and, and for local government funds, and for monies that come back to local communities that help us deal with flooding problems, dog pound, you know, local communities that need upgrades and capital improvements that we don't have the money for. So this boost in the arm has really given us the ability to try and do projects that were very long overdue and very well needed. So I thank you, all of you, for, you know, all your hard work in doing that, so.
Well, first off, we're all going to need to understand how to work that when you get this all connected in.
You won't even know it's there. It'll just be faster and better.
Faster and better. And our computers will be just popping on. Is that it?
Let, let the IT people handle the IT. We just reprogram.
Gina, thank you. Thank you, Mackenzie. Thank you also for coming. Keep us posted on where the drop-off spots will be in Mahoning County. If I were you, I'd put one in the courthouse.
We could include that. We have one at the administration building, but we can also put one in the courthouse.
Because you have more employees there.
Sure.
That would probably donate.
Absolutely.
So I would definitely, Alan can help you with that. Right, Alan?
Absolutely.
There we go. And Phil, thank you again. I know I probably was a little preempt on doing that, but when I got the call from the feds, I went, oh my God, you got to be kidding me.